It is seven o'clock. It is April 7th, 2021 as a preliminary matter. My name is Pete Pecos. I am the Chair of the Newberry Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy.
Present.
Thank you, sir. George Morse.
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie Matthews.
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight.
Yeah.
Thank you, Woody. And Mary Stone.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor.
Here.
Thank you, Martha. Emily Noble.
Here.
Hello, Emily.
Hello.
Hello, anticipated speakers on tonight's agenda. Please respond in the affirmative. Tom Z.
Here.
Hey, Tom. Phil Henry.
Here.
Hello, Phil. Don DeShane.
I don't see him yet.
Okay, Adam Tru.
I don't see him yet either.
Okay, Scott Cameron.
And I don't see him yet either.
All right. Good evening. This is April 7th, 2021. Open meeting of the Newberry Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public evidence. And as such, the governor order supersedes the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Plating, the Newberry Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 1-929-2056099 and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called upon. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to come to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any further comment, questions, motions. Please hold until your name is called further. For all attendings, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or your phone, which is star six to toggle to mute or unmute when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that the video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comment, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during our public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through Zoom's raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the yellow hand that appears. If you don't see yellow hand, click on the participant button. A list of participants will open and display on the right. At the bottom of this participant area, you will see the option to raise, to click on the raise hand button. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participation list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone, telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which the people click the raise hand function. Each participant will make, will be called upon to provide his or her name and address and then ask the questions or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participate or his representative the opportunity to speak. Your hand will be lowered when you've been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of those in the raise hand column and again afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronic submission of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by our own call. Okay, let's see. So we're at 7:05. We will start our public hearings at 7:15. And there'll be, I think, two public hearing tonight. That's what's on our agenda. So we're going to again try to schedule each session to be limited to about 30 to 45 minutes. Maximum if possible out of courtesy to the applicants, our speakers on the agenda and members of the public as well as our board members. And again, when we start our hearings, star nine is what will be used to mute and to raise hands. Okay. With that said, let me minimize this. Let me go over here. Let me pull up our agenda. And we have 10 minutes to go through some business. Let's see what we have first. We don't have any submissions. I love this Martha. This is a beautiful agenda. There is no new business. There is no old business. Mark Financial Reports. Let me pull those up. This is real simple, folks. We just have to read this into the record. The Planning Board Financial Report for February 2021, payroll and invoices authorized, number one, payroll warrants for the town planner and planning administrator. PR 21-19 for pay period ending, ending 3/13/21, PR 21-20 for pay period ending 3/27/21. Second is Planning Board expense invoices for Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad for, which is 3/30/21. And third, period invoices from the escrow account for Joe Swarker, who's a peer reviewer for 217, 221 High Road of the day is 3/16/21. And for Old Point Road, 2 Old Point Road for 3/16/2021. That takes care of our financial report. Okay. Select Board Liaison Reports. Leslie, do you want to hit us up with what's going on with the select board?
Um, well, we did have the combined meeting last night. I wasn't available for it yesterday, but the Select Board did meet with the Council on Aging for prospective plans for a new building. And we were updated on a lot of the COVID other things, but that's, you know, that's all I have at this point in time.
Okay, Martha, anything to sprinkle on top of that?
Let's say that, well, the Select Board did vote on the warrant. And that has been signed, the warrant for the Springtown meeting that's been signed. So I, I believe it has been posted or is in the process of being posted. There will be the usual, you know, I think FinCom booklet with rationals for all the various warrant articles that are included on, on the warrant for town meeting. There are a couple of upcoming things which may be of interest to the board. Next week, they are actually having a public hearing on the liquor license for the 2 Old Point Sunset Club. And they also have a special B and B special permit application before them for a property on Newbury Port Turnpike. I think it's 243 Newbury Port Turnpike, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, great. Okay, super. Larry, anything from ZBA?
I know I have nothing to report.
Okay.
I have one thing to report on that.
Okay.
The, the decision for the Cricket Lane, Village Cricket Lane 40B has been filed with the town clerk. So the appeal period has been started. Notices have been sent out to all the butters and parties in interest notifying them that the now the project was approved and the decision has been filed.
Okay. Concom, I think tomorrow we have a sidewalk for 15 Coleman. And I think, I think pretty much everything with 2 Old Point is on track. Is that right, Martha? Do I, is my memory correct on that one?
For the Concom, I, well, I believe so. I think the outstanding issues were the DEP comments which were addressed and reviewed with us last time. So.
Right.
I think I'm done with that.
Okay, anything from MBPC?
I was not able to attend the planners' meeting. I think that sort of general, general discussion. One thing that they, well, no, not really.
Okay. Um, okay, planners' report. This is great.
Let's see, a couple of things. CPTC does have some upcoming workshops and I'll be forwarding that information to you. There's one in particular. They'll be doing one on 40B for anybody who's, who's interested. So I will make a note to send that information to you tomorrow. And again, if I don't know for the online versions, if there is any associated with any of them, but if there is and you are interested in signing up, you know, that, that will be reimbursed out of our budget. Other than that, on the horizon, we do have one revised in our plan that will probably be coming before the board on the 21st. And also the solar project on the landfill. Bit by bit, they've been dealing with DEP on the post closure permit and some other things. And, and I've received an email. It looks like things are beginning to move forward. So that remains on our horizon.
Okay, um, and just to clarify, if everybody wasn't on earlier, Martha's hoping to have last night's decision kind of finalized tomorrow with all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. The ball goes well. And maybe available for signature. Is that right, Martha?
Yeah, it should be. I'm expecting a clean version from, from Brian. And so as soon as it's here, I'll notify you and see, see what we can do about getting signatures. By Friday, Emily and I are happy to drive it around if needed or, you know, do whatever. We'll make it most convenient to get it signed.
All right, is pizza included in that?
We could arrange for that.
Okay, all right.
Chocolate chip cookies or something.
All right. Well, now we're talking.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just go back to Coleman Road just for a moment. I was unable to attend the sidewalk for the planning board. Would there, would, do you think Concom would allow me to come along on that sidewalk just so I can familiarize myself with the, the landscape?
Let me direct that question to the town planner. How does that work, Martha?
Um. Probably it would be appropriate to either check with Bill Holt Conservation Agent. Yeah, I would, I would direct it to him and then he might direct it to, to the Chair. You know, I don't see why it would be an, an issue. And we could also ask Tom Z whether, whether he would be open to that. He's smiling and seems to be nodding his head.
That would be fine with me. You're welcome to come anytime.
I, I have one more question.
Wait a minute, it was just, it was just, it was just one question, Leslie.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Please, please.
Um. I haven't heard any, living on Main Street, I was just wondering, is the Borrego project still on target? Are they, have they moved forward on that at all?
They are, they are essentially done. I mean, they're, they're at the point of kind of closing out. So there are things that we need to do now in terms of looking at screening and the effectiveness of what was put in, what additional screening might be done and that, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I have to say there has not been, it doesn't seem that there was any kind of impact whatsoever during the whole project. So I commend them on that.
Yeah, that's good to hear. I didn't, I really didn't hear anything either.
And I think going forward, it's going to be very quiet, too.
Yeah. A quiet neighbor.
Which is probably very, very helpful. But yeah, it's, it's very, it's a very impressive site. And it's, it's very different looking from our very first walk of that area. So you can get an appreciation of the amount of technology there in the large array that has been placed there.
Pete, what time is the sidewalk?
What, tomorrow? I think it's 10, no, wait a minute, sidewalk. It says five o'clock. Yeah, five o'clock.
Okay, I was just thinking in terms of contacting Bill.
Yeah. I was hoping for 10, but I think we landed at five.
Okay.
That's 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM, yes.
Actually, then I was tied up most of tomorrow, but let me add myself to Leslie's request. And I was not able to make the planning wood sidewalk either. So.
Okay.
If, if possible, if it turns out that way, I'd like to attend as well.
Okay. Martha, do you want to do the official request to Bill then since we?
Yes, I will, I will do that.
Okay, great. That'll be easier that way. Perfect. Thank you, Larry. Okay. Yes, thank you, Leslie. Okay, I'm going to turn back to our agenda since it is 7:15 on the button. And we're going to continue with our public hearings. The first is going to be a concurrent public hearing for 15 Coleman Road. Map R2 lots 12 and 13, owner applicant. Tom, help me out, buddy.
Tom Zarico.
All right. It doesn't look like that. Is it Zendico LLC?
Zenco, that's my family's initials.
Okay, well, Zenco LLC, Tom Z manager, which is continuing from March 3 of 2021. It's an OSRD special permit application. And it's an OSRD definitive subdivision plan application. So let me drop this down here. I'm just going to pop this other component up here for me. And I just do want to remind folks with regards to the public comment point when we get there, if there's anybody who is not on a computer and is using the phone, the raise hand function is star nine. And that's how we'll go with that. Okay, Tom, do you have anything to discuss with us or any responses to the peer review letter?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you, Peter. Again, Tom Zarico, 15 SD Street in Amesbury. Since the last meeting, we secured the soils data for the yield plan lots, which were located on the rear of the property. And they, we also revised the yield plan lot lines to accommodate those tests on their respective lots. Hopefully that allows agreement to be determined on the yield plan for five lots and then also on the OSRD density as well. We also received peer review comments and comprehensively responded to those on March 16th. Unfortunately, we haven't received feedback yet from Joe regarding our responses. The comments from FIRE were addressed and accommodated. Responses to DPW comments are all pending a public or private road determination as we move forward, if we move forward. We spoke with Byfield Water to reconfirm what we had been told earlier regarding the sufficiency of water volume and pressure. They confirmed what they had told us before, but even so, we've also scheduled flow tests with them for April 14th or 15th. So we will have that information shortly. The Historical Commission provided comments which are consistent with our plans. We also opened our notice of intent hearing with conservation, had a productive dialogue and are scheduled, as I think everybody has heard, for a sidewalk tomorrow afternoon. Phil Henry, a civil engineer, is connected with us tonight and available for technical questions. I'm hoping that the elemental questions of the OSRD special permit yield plan and proposed density can be settled. And with that, I think we're ready to answer any questions or, or clarify anything. Thanks.
Okay, Martha, do you have some other information from Joe or?
I did. And if I did not forward that to you, I apologize. I did get a letter from him on, on Monday. And it's been a bit of a whirlwind week, so I'm afraid that I thought I had sent it and obviously I didn't. So I really apologize for that. And I will do that right after the meeting. If you want, I can go over his comments. Now. There were, I think, and he could really only comment on the, the plans that were revised, which was the yield plan. And he noted that the other plans had not been, not been revised. So I won't read all of those, but I can read you his substantive comments if you would like. And I guess I don't know whether the board would also like Phil to, to go through the revisions that were made on the plans that were submitted.
I think that would be helpful. Phil, do you want to do that first? And then maybe Martha can let you know what Joe said. And I understand that you're just getting Joe's stuff on now. So.
But so for the record, my name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. So what we, what we do in projects of this size, and particularly when we're in front of multiple departments and boards, is that we, we, we acknowledge items that are being requested to be changed or required to be changed on the plan. We commit to those. However, along the line, if a plan change rises to the level that we should be submitting it during the approval process, i.e. the yield plan, we do so. However, like minor issues like changing pipes from HDP to Dr. Ion, we just say note, noted, and then we will prepare a final plan before approval for, for final review of the planning board and conservation in this case. But what we did do is can I, could I share my screen, Martha?
I've, I've set you up to do that, yes.
Okay. So. Can everybody see this plan here?
Give it a sec. Here we go.
All right, let me see if I can get my annotation. You should be able to see my mouse now. Is that correct?
Yes, I might need to make it a little bit larger for us, though.
Yep. All right, I'll do that. So this is the, the overall yield plan. And what the, what Joe was requesting was additional data to, to, to confirm that lots three and four could be supported on, on septic. This, again, this is just for the yield plan. This is not the yield, this is not the plan we are proposing to construct, but this is just the yield plan to set the, the number of homes per, per, per the yield, what the site will actually yield. Lots one, two, and five, Joe actually witnessed those test pits over the summer. Three and four were historical test pits done back in 2016 that were witnessed by, I believe, Deb Rogers that were done by another engineer. We've been trying to get those comments or those, those results for, for quite some time. And we were able to retrieve them just this past month. So what we did is we, we plotted those test pits on this plan here, which you could see here. And I could, I could further, further zoom in. And those test pits locations, they, they match the, the, the information that was, that was submitted to us from the Health Department that we then resubmitted back to the planning board, which should be in the package, our resubmission package. So essentially, the, the data showed that the location of these soil, soil information, then what we essentially did is we, we realigned the, the shared side lot line between lots three and four, leaving the frontage alone. And as you could see, there's, there's, there's plenty of area to do so. We essentially just you know, realign the, the sidelines so that there were sufficient enough information on both properties. And, and, and the, and the, the soil informations has, have requisite, requisite distances to the property lines and requisite distances to each other for two independent septic systems. So that's really what we were hoping to get feedback on because I, I don't think this project can progress with other aspects of it without getting an understanding that this site can support five lots, which then we can talk about how many more lots can the OSRD support. So I guess with that being said, that, that, that's really the only thing we submitted. All of the other comments raised by Joe were either acknowledgements or, or items that we committed to, but they were very minor in nature. And I don't think they rose to the level of, of, of submitting a revised plan set to do that.
Martha, do you have an opportunity to hit the highlights just so for information purposes?
Yes, I got it right here. So his first comment was about the scale of the yield plan. And he said a 40 scale portion of the yield plan has been provided sheet 4.1 with tested data shown. The second refers to what Phil was just talking about, the tested data for lots three and four. And he noted that soil and perk test data from 2016 have been provided for lots three and four. There was a comment about septic area rectangles. As the response from Phil was that septic area rectangles are not required as part of the yield plan submission requirements. See, a lot of these have to do with the revisions, as Phil said, will be noted or incorporated into a final plan. One is a waiver is requested from depicting trees over six inches in diameter. The board may want existing large trees around the existing house barn and Long Coleman Road to be depicted at a minimum. Based on the current grading concept, it does not appear that any large trees are to remain. And then Joe's response to the responses, the board may want to review the response relative to removal and replacement of existing trees. The next response was regarding LID versus what's been proposed. And Joe notes, the response states that low impact drainage design was considered for the site and provides a detailed discussion as to why it's ruled out in favor of the closed drainage system shown on the plans. Several things about clearance plans will be corrected, notes will be added, clarified. One has to do with parking for the public access. And Joe notes that the response simply states that access and parking will be determined pursuant to the determination of public versus private way. So that is something that will have to be discussed as we go through the process. There's a note about selectively clearing trees with the, within this area. An engineer should address this. Joe's response to the response states, the response states that this label provides flexibility to the contractor that is consistent with the spirit of the OSRD bylaw. No blasting is anticipated. There was a comment about a fence on top of a retaining wall. The response states that final plans will depict a post and rail fence on walls four feet and taller in height. The board may want the fence shown along the top of the entire wall, not just sections over four feet in height. Regarding landscaping plan, yes, Joe had noted that no shrubs, perennials, et cetera, are addressed. And that your response stated that there does not appear to be a requirement to indicate shrubs, perennials, et cetera, on individual house lots. Perhaps that can be discussed as well as we go further. A comment about whether each lot will have sprinkler systems for landscaping. The response states that individual irrigation systems are not typically installed by the developer. My experience has been that some developers will install individual irrigation systems, especially on the fronts of lots. Stormwater management, the, his original comment was the O and M plan appears to indicate that this will be a privately maintained project likely with a homeowners association. The board may want to make that a condition of any approvals. And Joe says that the response states that the roadway is proposed to be a public right of way. The issues of utility stormwater BMPs and septic system would be, have to be addressed. And this is something obviously that will need to be discussed. Regarding snow storage, I guess the, the response was that no snow, snow storage areas are believed to be required. So that may need to be addressed further. Those are basically the substantive comments. So again, I apologize. And I'll get this to you right after the meeting. Martha, I received a copy of this. Yeah, I know. I sent it to the board. I think I did not send it to the applicant.
So sorry about that, Tom. We will, we will get that to you and we won't ask you necessarily to comment on those things since you just got that information today. Okay, Phil, that sound good?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good. However, it, it appears that if I, if I understand Martha correctly, Joe, Joe agreed or has, has reviewed those test bits on lots three and four?
Yes, he did. So he said, he said that that, that data has been provided for lots three and four.
Okay. Okay.
So that's your driving force, Phil. Yes, okay, great. We can probably stop screenshot if that's okay.
Okay.
And let me see if any board members have anything on what was presented by the applicant. Start with you, Larry first, sir, do you have any questions or comments?
I just, I want to just focus on the yield plan for the time being. I know Joe says that he received the information from 2016 on the perks for lots three and four. But he doesn't comment on whether or not it's sufficient. Martha, do you have any information on that, that you know, the board of health has weighed in on it?
They actually have not weighed in on it. I know that this information, the information that's on the drawings was provided by the Board of Health. And my my recollection is that there were perks in that area that 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 could support septic systems.
Will we be getting something from the board of health at some point?
I will ask them for for confirmation. Though I don't know if you if you are able to describe that information in any any greater detail, like the the types of the soils and and perk rates and that kind of stuff to to confirm their suitability.
Sorry, are you talking to me, Martha?
I was.
Oh, so. Well, I think, I guess, without seeing the comments, I guess my comment would be if 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 Joe seemingly had an issue with the data, I think he would have acknowledged it and recognized it. So there was there were varying perk rates and and soil types, but but all seemed to be sufficient enough to to support a septic system on on each of those lots.
Okay, and that's fine, I just think we need to make sure that that's clear in the record.
Okay, sure.
Again, just focusing on the yield plan, I know at one point Joe had a concern that there might be a common driveway special permit might be required to access lots three and four. And quite frankly, I don't know where his concern is coming from because there seems to be sufficient frontage. Can anybody help me understand what his concern was?
Yeah, Larry, could could I respond to that? Yeah, the the existing crossing there is about twenty feet wide, certainly. You know, I'm not a fan of common driveways anyway, even if we were to do that, but that that crossing could be widened by four feet and have two you know, two parallel driveways, you know, that that wouldn't require a common driveway special permit. I mean, that, again, it's all conceptual, but it would be minimal minimal wetland alteration would be about a hundred and fifty square feet. It's a really, it's a very minor thing to do if in fact it were to be done.
So and I saw that was that was your your response that parallel driveways would be utilized. So basically, his concern came from the location of wetlands, is that, do I understand you correct, Tom?
Correct, yeah, that's that's, I think, what he was thinking, that the that the existing crossing is 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 twenty feet wide. So in order to, you know, I'm not sure why he made the comment, to tell you the truth, because you know, a minor project like that is easily permissible to widen that enough to have two parallel driveways. So it's it's not necessary to to do a common driveway.
And Martha, help me out, if, you know, if they were to have to, you know, in in theory here going forward with this as a subdivision, utilize parallel driveways. That would not conflict with our subdivision regulations, would it?
Not currently, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
May I ask, may I ask, what 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 did Joe, what did Joe respond to our responses?
He simply noted your response about the parallel driveways. But he didn't make any any further negative comments. I, once again, I just didn't understand where his concern was.
Yeah.
So wanted to understand that better.
Thank you, thank you, Larry, is that is that it?
As far as the yield plan goes, I don't know if you want to get into anything else at this point.
Yeah, maybe further in the discussion, I just want to see about what was just presented. George, do you have anything on what was just presented by the applicants?
Yeah, the only question I had was Larry took up right away was the nature of the soils and the septic test test.
Okay, all right. Very good, thank you, Larry. Leslie, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Um, there were.
Whoa. But you froze for a second, Leslie, so hold on. Let's see if she comes back.
That's not a normal procedure.
So Leslie, unfortunately, you froze, so you're probably going to have to start from the very beginning.
To to put a fence around the whole construction site area, is that normal procedure? That was something that was talked about in the paperwork in the packet?
Yes, I mean, we we believe so. I mean, it's it's for it's for safety precaution, it's it protects the applicant, it also protects the abutters as well. And it creates a clear delineation that this is a work zone.
Thank you.
Okay, is, Leslie?
That's all I have.
Thanks very much, Leslie. What do you say, do you have anything?
No, not on, not on the yield plan that hasn't already been asked.
Okay, Mary, do you have anything? Okay, I got a couple of questions. Tom, you mentioned the flow tests are going to take, are going to be taking place on the fourteenth and fifteenth, did I get that right?
That's correct.
Okay, cool, are they going to be taken in the fire hydrant that's right in front of your spot?
Yes, and potentially one further down the street as well. They be, we're coordinating that with the the routine flushing of those hydrants that that water department does. So so we'll follow along with them, you know, as 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 they're flushing.
So you'd be doing them individually?
Yes, yes.
Be nice to see those testing done contiguous at the same time. I'd be very curious as to what that looked like.
Yeah, I said, I'm not sure what how often that's done, but I, in in that regard, Peter, I'm leaving it up to the to the folks who do the testing at the Byfield Water Department to do.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Tom. Yeah, I just remember the, it's the end of the line and I heard some concerns from neighbors about that, so.
Well, I would, I would think that if there's any question or issue or that that they see when they're doing that test, I would think that the the Byfield Water would would be maybe maybe make a suggestion as to do something like that if in fact that they thought it was, you know, prudent.
Yep, gotcha. Hey, there's a mention of trees. From what I remember from our conversations and walks, the majority of the larger trees were still going to be remaining, was that right? One disease, one I remember by the stone wall.
Yeah, the ones, the 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 trees out near the street, Peter, if you, I don't know if you looked recently, what? One of them came down or split in half and then fell right near the witch stone, actually, this winter. We we took that out and cleared that out. I think three out of the four other trees along the street are clearly clearly compromised and should be replaced because they're just going to end up on top of something or someone. They're clearly clearly compromised. There's a few trees, large trees, butternut in particular near the barn that has one large limb that needs to be taken down at a minimum because it hangs directly over the barn. That that one tree, you know, one of the reasons why why I don't want to say I'll absolutely keep it is because if we if we if if we feel like we've damaged the root system, you know, with with the installation, the septic system, the piping and that type of thing, I mean, we're usually very cautious with this stuff. But we don't know how vertical or how horizontal that root system goes. And we just want to be, you know, we don't want to make a promise we can't keep. And, you know, that's really what it comes down to. But but the but the majority of the site really does have to be cleared. If you recall, down the dirt road, there's another large tree, but it's also in very compromised condition. A lot of dead branches, you know, weeping from the trunk. So, you know, this is one of those typical trade offs from my perspective, not to elaborate too much, but you know, we're trying to preserve and protect and not touch twenty seven or so acres. And and in doing that, you know, that's part of the decision processes is, you know, having having to having to take more than than we might typically in order to preserve the the larger portion.
Okay, yep. I just remember, I think the intention was to try to salvage a lot of the larger trees by the house in the barn if possible. And I understand the the concerns with septic and such.
Yeah, there and there's one large, one large maple, I think, to the to the to the west of the to the west of the house that's in bad shape. I mean, that that can probably be preserved as well. So, and I don't mind taking the walk with folks and taking a look at them, you know, to and discussing, you know, with respect to the plan and then the amount of infrastructure that has to go in. You know, what we can do.
Sure, that's great. And what one, I'm going to change channels on you. When at the con con meeting, you indicated that you started talking with planning board with regards for parking for the open space. And I didn't, I didn't hear that in the last comment that was made here. Is that is that still on the table?
Well, I think my, I think my comment has been pretty consistent on this. And I think, just like, in fact, DPW asked some question, or made some comments relative to the same thing. There was some some abutters or some 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 residents that that asked that question as well. I I think that question gets answered along with or, you know, subsequent to the public-private road determination. I mean, I think we need to have a, you know, a just a you know, a deep discussion about about the merit of either one. I I understand that that, you know, the preference, you know, on the on the regulatory side is to is to make it private. And I understand, you know, keeping down the municipal costs and everything. But but then, but then what we're trying to do is 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 provide a space, a public space. And and that's, you know, crossing a private road to get to a public space creates liability questions and other other complications that I think, you know, need to be need to be discussed. This this cul-de-sac, to elaborate on it just a little bit more, the cul-de-sac is quite large. There is plenty of room in that center core of the cul-de-sac to have some 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 parking spaces there that would be easily maintained and wouldn't be intrusive into any of the lots. If in fact, if in fact, we decided to do that, I think that would be the way to go.
Okay, cool. Well, I I understand what you're saying, that further discussions are needed with regards to that. I was just trying to, you know, combine, understand the comment from the conservation meeting the other day and tonight's comment. Okay, cool, Tom, thank you. Let me see, Martha, do you have any any items that have been submitted or comments that you've received today?
The only two things, as Tom noted, we, there was a a letter from the Historical Commission dated March 12, 2021. And we also received an email, a meet, well, it was actually sent right before the public hearing started last time from Derek Estella, which was forwarded to the board that came in on March 3, 7:06 PM.
Great, thank you. So at this time, as far as what's been presented so far, I'd like to see if there's any public questions or comments. So I'd like to invite anybody in the public to raise their hand and allow the opportunity to respond to any questions that might be present at at this point in the the meeting. So I'll give you a couple of seconds to see if there's anyone from the public that wants to raise their hand and ask a question.
I see one.
Okay.
William Manthorn.
Okay, William, if you wouldn't mind name and address, thanks so much.
Yeah, sure, thank you. Again, it's Bill Manthorn, 79 Elm Street, so I'm going to butter on the the backside of it. I apologize if I missed this before, but I know we talked about it in the first meeting about a month ago and it was regarding the trails and things that are back there now. And I was just curious, number one, are those going to be left again, natural? I think my question might have been misconstrued or misunderstood the last time. My preference as in a butter would be to leave them natural, you know, not having them graded and gravelled and, you know, kind of turned into a Newburyport rail trail scene. So it's more, again, a natural footpath, if you will. So it's one question. The second one was just, I might have misunderstood as well, is there going to be a total of six or seven homes, including the existing structure that's there now? And then another question was regarding the sidewalk tomorrow, if the public, are they allowed to go on this sidewalk to to kind of see and get a feel for where things are? And then lastly, if, again, this is just my personal opinion as a as a butter. And if it's a way not to have a public parking there to turn this into a rail trail situation, I obviously would rather have it just for the neighborhood, for the, you know, close neighborhoods and the and the and the houses that are within the area to be able to walk back there. It's one of these trails literally goes right behind my entire backyard, but that's obviously a, you know, personal preference thing. I understand other people might feel differently, but those are the kind of questions I have, thank you.
Tom, do you want to take a crack at a couple of those questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's that's good, no problem. First of all, my preference too is to is to is to leave those trails in their in their, you know, in their quote, natural condition, if you will. I mean, those are beautiful farm paths, they're easily traversable, easy to walk. You know, and I would, I would not, I would rather not disturb anything, anything more. I mean, I don't think it's necessary to disturb anything more. So that's my feeling on that. In terms of the number of lots, again, that's that's where we're trying to get resolution to. But the 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 intent, the proposal is for seven total lots, which includes the existing house with its barn remaining, you know, essentially, as you see them on that, on that, on that lot. In terms of the sidewalk, you're welcome, you're welcome to join. Of course, that's that's perfectly fine. And in terms of the parking, I think that's that's that ongoing discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Bill, we appreciate you participating tonight, thank you. Martha, did you see any other hands at this point in time?
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay.
Scanning, yes, Tom, Tom and Elizabeth.
Okay, Tom and Elizabeth, if you wouldn't mind identifying yourself, name and address, please, thanks so much.
Yeah, how you doing, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Yeah, Tom Cook, One Long Brook Road. My question is is the, has the board given any consideration into doing a traffic study on Coleman Road? There's a lot of conversation about the volume of traffic on Coleman Road at the previous meeting.
So is that question to the board or to the applicant?
Either.
Okay, from the board for a second, but I can tell you what we've done is we've requested information from Newbury PD. We're still waiting for information from them so we can have appreciation of what that traffic is like. And I think we're going to also reach out to Raleigh to see on the other side what was going on with that. And Tom, I don't know if you were entertaining the concept of a of a traffic study.
Well, you know, I I I understand the concerns, first of all, I mean, you know, the winding road. The, I'm not sure what a traffic study is going to tell us. I mean, it will tell us, you know, that there's that there's cars there and it will tell us that there's cars there going faster than they're supposed to be going. You know, so, you know, I think we already know that. Knowing the precise number of cars, I don't know how that affects too much. Because what we're planning on adding to it is really the question, from my perspective. What what we're planning on adding to it is relatively minimal under under any analysis because we just have a couple of lots here. You know, the, I I understand the the visibility from Long Brook is is challenging. The visibility on our side of the road is 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 really good. It's it's more than sufficient, that's been presented in the plans and with the with some detail. So again, I I I understand the concern, I mean, I I I I don't think a traffic study tells us much because what we're really concerned about, what I'm concerned about as an applicant is how am I contributing to that, to that, to that traffic scenario? And that's, you know, under any measure, it's relatively minimal additional additional impact from us.
Yeah, may I add something, Peter?
Sure, go right ahead, Tom.
Or Phil.
Phil, I'm sorry, I was looking at Tom and I was listening to Phil's voice, sorry, my apologies.
So so a few other things, we 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 positioned the driveway for for a number of reasons where it is. But but specific to this issue, we we positioned it right across from from Long Brook. So folks will be able to, folks exiting this subdivision So uh, folks will be able to, folks exiting this subdivision uh will be able to, to obviously see folks coming up Long Brook. It's also important to note that uh this side of the site is on the outside of the curve. And if, if, if you look at the overall layout and open space plan, uh, there's, there's sufficient sightlines, 290 feet uh to the, to the west uh and, and 390 feet to the, to the east. So exiting vehicles will have a, a, a significant view as they're exiting the site. Conversely, folks that are, that are gonna be living here uh or traveling to this site will, will A, be traveling at, at low speeds, because they'll be pulling into the, the subdivision road. Uh, and, and B, they'll be familiar with the nature of the road, because they, they'll be living there at that point. So I just think it's important to note, aside from technical reasons, just anecdotally and just practically looking at at the operation of, of, of who's gonna be using this road and what they're gonna be familiar with, I think is important to know.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Uh, Tom, does that answer your question, sir?
Uh, yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Appreciate you participating tonight. It helps, it helps us with our, our process. Martha, what else do you have there?
Uh, so we have Mark.
Mark, so you're gonna need your first and last name and address for us, please.
Can you see me there, guys?
We can see you, Mark.
I apologize. I'm a little not computer savvy. Anyways, my, I, um, my name is Mark Cutter. I live at 23 Coleman Road. And um, I would attend the last meeting, and first of all, thank you very much all. I just wanna make it known, as I asked three questions last time, one was the um, the traffic thing, which I think Tom talked about, and um, I had concerns about coming out of the, the new roadway, and I'm actually happy. I um, when Derek, Derek addressed it last time, I went over and drove it, coming up from the street across from Long Brook was I had concerns, well, people pulling out, but coming from that angle, it um, I was actually happy, because the angle is different, and you can see the traffic coming both ways, so that that one, I'm not, no, no, no concerns here from me, and that is a butter right now. Okay, just let you know that. Um, the second thing was, I um, I had concerns of um, the water pressure up here, because I live at the very end of the the Coleman Road here, 23, which is 23 and 25, and Tom sees, um, excuse me, keep seeing Tom for some reason, but Derek um sees the addressing that, and I guess I just wanna make sure that it's noted that he said he's addressing with the um, the water commission, and that they're gonna make sure that the, some kind of letter or something gets put in file um, in this process. I'm, I don't know how the process works, but that we will not see a low-pressure water um drop up here, and I guess that's what he's doing, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much for that, Derek. I appreciate that, and I, I look forward to seeing that results. Um, and there was one other thing, I forget what it was, but yeah, so um, I, I'm, I'm, I feel good with this project. I think he's done a great job and, and um, looking out for the concerns of the local neighbors and the butters, and um, I just wanna make sure, just as I said, as long as the water pressure, because 23 and 25 Coleman Road have had issues over the years, and once I see the results of that from the Byfield Water District, um, hoping that what he has said is addresses my concerns, I'll, I'll be happy with it.
Wonderful. Uh, Mark, uh, thank you very much for participating. Did you, we just dropped you, or did you go somewhere? Oh, I see. He just moved. Okay. We lower the hand. Okay, uh, thank you very much for your, for your questions and your comments, Mark. Appreciate that. Um, I don't see any of the hands up, and what I wanna do is I just wanna a- ask the board right now if there's any questions or comments on what was asked uh from the public. Uh, Larry, do you have anything, sir?
Uh, well, just a couple of comments. Um, you know, I, I think it's important to remember when, when we get into a more detailed discussion about um ownership of the way, whether it be public or private, that it's not this board that ultimately makes that determination. You know, it's the selectmen, and it's a term of art, the selectmen that lay it out in town meeting that ultimately has to vote on whether or not to accept the way as a public way. We certainly can make a recommendation, have some influence. But my, the point I'm trying to make is, uh, either way, uh, there has to be some accommodation for public parking, because that's what, you know, it, it's critical that the public have access to, to the open space. Um, the gentleman who asked about the nature trails, uh, my thinking is, you know, it's ultimately going to be tied to a discussion on who's going to own that space. Um, and there are basically four choices under our bylaw. One is a nonprofit such as Asset Screen Belt. Uh, the other is the town, either in, in the name of the town or through its Conservation Commission. The third is homeowners association, and the fourth would be a private owner for agricultural, horticulture, or forestry uses. I think we can rule out the fourth, but ultimately would, we, we need to have a discussion about how that open space is gonna be held. And lastly, uh, my sort of gut reaction is that a traffic study isn't gonna give us much information that we don't already have. Uh, keep an open mind on that until we hear from the police department, but uh, I'm not inclined to think that that's necessary at this point.
Okay, uh, thanks very much, Larry. Uh, George, any, any thoughts from the discussion that's taken part, uh, from the public perspective?
No further questions. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, George. Uh, Leslie, uh, anything additional at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Thanks, Leslie. Uh, Woody, sorry, anything at this time?
Um, as far as the, the open space and the trail system, um, if it's gonna be accessible to the public, the public needs a place to park. So that road, parking on that road, I don't see as an option, just as a comment. Um, other than that, no, I don't have any.
Thanks, Woody. Um, Mary, do you have any thoughts or comments at this time?
Just to echo Larry's comment about the traffic study, I don't really understand how that would uh, provide any further information about what seems to be our common sense.
Okay, all right, uh, thanks. Um, so I think I'd like to take the discussion uh in a little bit of a direction here, just so we can give some, um, some insight for the applicant. Um, I guess the first question is, um, and I'm gonna start the question, is this an acceptable yield plan? And um, I'd like to start that discussion and hear from board members. So Larry, I'm gonna start with you first.
Uh, I, I, I didn't identify any reason, uh, you know, why this wouldn't be a viable yield plan. Subject to my earlier comments, I just wanna make sure we have in the record that, that we do have sufficient perks out there, that that's demonstrated.
Okay, so the concern is the sufficient perks. Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. Uh, George, your thoughts on, is this an acceptable yield plan?
I think it's very acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that, George. Uh, Leslie?
I'm in agreement with George and Larry.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Uh, Woody?
The same. I'm in agreement. That's acceptable.
Okay, uh, Mary?
I don't see any reason to not accept it.
All right, yeah, and I also, I also feel the uh, same way. Um, okay, the next question is um, open space. Does the, what's been discussed so far is the proposed open state, uh, open space. Does that meet our bylaw requirements? So, Mary, uh, Martha, just help me with our bylaw requirements, just so we can refresh those with the board and the public.
So, under the bylaw, the uh, so the open space requirements, a minimum of 50% of the upland shown on the development plan shall be open space. Uh, it'll be subject to a permanent park conservation or agricultural preservation uh agreement, and then the open space shall be contiguous. Uh, contiguous shall be defined as being connected, i.e. not separated by wetlands. So those are the two. Um, the open space shall be used for wildlife habitat and conservation, or, and the following additional purposes. Historic preservation, outdoor education, passive recreation, agriculture, horticulture, together with suitable access for such purposes.
So the, the first threshold is the 50% of upland, and the second threshold is contiguous. Did I hear that correctly?
Right, and there's one other wastewater, wastewater and stormwater management service system serving the OSRD may be located within the open space, but surface systems such as retention and detention pond shall not qualify toward the minimum open space required.
So those three components, we have to, um, so, um, what is the upland, um, open space as, as opposed to the entire open space, Martha? Do we know what that number looks like?
Um, I think, uh, if Phil can bring that up on the, on his plan, I know they've got the numbers.
Sure, it's, it's, um, it's 20.7 acres is the upland open space, which is 65% of the, of the entire track.
5%, okay, great. Um, and with regards to the contiguous component, I, where are we with that?
Um, it's, it's, we think it's all contiguous. It's all, it's all one. It's shown as one hatched area. So I'll, I could, I could pull it up here, uh, but for folks, uh, it's, um, it's, it's sheet six as well.
So we can tick through this, uh, Phil?
Yep, hold on one second.
And I'm sorry, could you repeat the acreage and the percentage?
Sure, it's um, the, just the open space, uh, the upland open space, not the wetlands in the open space is 20.7 acres, which is 65%.
Thank you.
Okay, and now let me here my screen. Okay, does everybody see this?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'll just, um, I'm just gonna zoom in here. So the gray hatch is the um, the open space. And I'm just gonna, just, I could, I could, Peter, I'll take your lead if you want me to zoom back out. I'm just gonna do that. So, um, you guys probably can't see my, oh.
Actually, we could. It's had the, uh, it had the calculation of the 65%, I think.
You could see that, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. That's right here.
So it's the third line from the bottom on your chart.
Right where my mouse is.
Okay, cool. And our threshold is 50%. Okay, great, good, okay. Uh, and the contiguous component, we are also okay with. And the last component, Martha, was with regards to uh wastewater, um, and not being.
Subsurface is okay, but surface systems uh don't count towards that, but I believe that since you're not, you're using a conventional stormwater.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we're not looking to, to include any of the septic or stormwater as open space. It's, it's exclusive of that.
All right, uh, we can probably stop screen sharing. Thanks very much, Phil. Okay, I just wanna make sure that everyone on the board is comfortable that we meet the open space threshold requirement. Larry, you, sir?
Would seem so, yep.
Very good. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Woody?
Yes.
Thank you, and Mary?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, so, uh, we're 15% above the threat, threshold, and I, I don't know if now's the time to, to start this um, the discussion with regards to uh bonus lots that's being requested. Martha, help me just kind of frame this.
So, um, the applicant has requested two bonus lots. The OSRD bylaw does provide provision for increases in permissible density. And um, what, uh, what it states is that for each additional 10% of the site over and above the required 50% set aside as open space, a bonus of one additional lot or 5% of the basic maximum number, which is derived from the yield plan, whichever is greater, may be awarded.
Maybe, okay, more, okay. Um, can, is it possible, uh, Phil, for you to now pop up the proposed uh, uh, the proposal that you have for the OSRD, the lot configuration?
And also in my comments, um, and Joe's, I, I took the liberty of outlining uh the purpose and intent of the OSRD bylaw and how we comply with, with each of those. Does everybody see that?
Uh, we do, and can you just enlarge that a little bit?
Sure. So obviously, this is just showing the, the front portion of like the, of the lot, the, the developed area.
Right. So the, um, and I'm gonna ask you, just, can you make that just a, a scotch bigger?
Like zoomed in more?
Uh, yeah, just so we can see the lot numbers easily. My tired eyes see them, but yeah, if that's possible.
Yeah, no, no worries. It's, 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 um, counterclock, uh, I'm sorry, clockwise, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Okay, so, um,
Okay, as we have that image up, Martha, is it possible to go through the purpose and intent of the OSRD as we're looking at that, so we just can, kinda see how things match up?
Sure, um, would you like me to read that?
Uh, that would be good, because I want people to probably hear the, hear the, uh, the intent and while they're looking at the image.
Okay, so the primary purposes for the open space residential development bylaw are the following. One, to allow for greater flexibility and creativity in the design of residential developments. Two, to encourage the permanent preservation of open space, agricultural land, forestry land, wildlife habitat, other natural resources, including aquifers, water bodies, and wetlands, and historical and archaeological resources in a manner that is consistent with Newbury's open space plan. Three, to encourage a less sprawling and more efficient form of development that consumes less open land and conforms to existing topography and natural features, better than a conventional or grid subdivision. Four, to minimize the total amount of disturbance on the site. Five, to further the goals and policies of the open space plans. Six, to facilitate, facilitate the construction and maintenance of housing, streets, utilities, and the provision of public services in a more economical and efficient manner. The secondary purposes for OSRD are the following: to preserve and enhance the community character, to protect the value of real property, to provide for diversified housing stock, to provide affordable housing to persons of low and moderate income, and five, to provide open-spaced lands managed for passive recreation, which are accessible to the public. So those are the primary and secondary purposes.
Uh, hey, Phil, do you have a, um, a, uh, like a Google Earth that can lay on top of this? So you can see what it looks like and have the, this image superimposed upon it? Do you have that capacity, or have you done that?
Um, I have, we have a, uh, let's, we have this plan, which is the site context plan, which has the zoom, I, I could zoom in, obviously, but is this, is this what you're looking?
Yeah, that's the concept I'm looking for, yep. So I want everybody just to, to get a feel for what things look like now, and that's where I'm going with this. Okay, go ahead.
So, um, how, how, how much would you like me to zoom in?
Uh, just, I guess, so we can see, uh, see, see the lots and the numbers. Yeah, like, that's perfect. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, and can you do that a little bit more?
Sure, of course.
Just, just a scotch more, like maybe 10% more.
10%, let's see.
Perfect, that's great. Yeah, so, uh, I just wanna kind of direct the discussion for the board to, um, so we're, we're trying to keep in in context of the environment that's, that is existing now. And so we have farmlands uh to the north. Is that north?
Uh, west.
West, okay, okay. Uh, we have farmlands to the west. We have, uh, we have wooded area, um, behind, behind the site. Uh, we have uh homes with acreage uh to the east. Um, and then we have a residential uh subdivision uh across the way. And we have, Tom, is that, has that house been earmarked as a, as a, as a historic uh, house of historic significance?
It hasn't been, it hasn't been listed, uh, is my understanding.
What year was it, Bill?
1787.
It's, it's historically significant.
Yes, it is.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you, but my thought, and I don't wanna direct the board, but I'll tell you my thought. I mean, you have this beautiful farmhouse. You have this beautiful country setting on one side of a road. Uh, you have a beautiful stone wall with the historic witch stone, which is there. I didn't mean to do, put two witches together, uh, but that's how it came out in my verbiage. Uh, you have a beautiful stone wall with the historic uh witch stone, which is there, I didn't mean to do put two witches together, uh, but that's how it came out in my verbiage, um. And I guess my my thought is lot seven. Uh, is there a way, is there a way to 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 to? To keep the nature of what's there now in a in achieve what you need to achieve uh without lot seven being designed as such? Has any thought gone into that?
Yeah, I mean, I I will tell you that uh, one of the one of the reasons or the primary reason for uh um trying to preserve the workshop, as we call it, or the the um. Uh, you know, the outbuilding, you know, the white outbuilding and put it on lot seven was precisely to do that, it was to keep that that. Uh aggregation of buildings looking looking together still, slightly different orientation, of course, but looking like they they're still together. Um, you know, it's certainly. You know, the economics of these things are delicate, I mean, I, you know, that's just a reality, um, you know, there's this. There are things that we could that we could do to enhance what we've already proposed there, Peter, if that's what you're asking, uh, or that's how I'll respond, I guess, is a, it certainly would be. Uh, you know, we've done some wonderful things with evergreen screening, uh, and we could, we could do a nice job of of uh screening the new house from uh, you know, from the from Coleman. Uh, between between the um, uh, between the outbuilding and the house, uh, and I think we could do that pretty pretty well.
So now I want to ask, uh, Phil, can you come even closer now with that with that image? I'm really going to test the the computer skills here.
Sorry, I was on, I was on mute.
No, no, you're you're fine, that's perfect, that's perfect, Martha, this the second of the last secondary. Uh, uh. Series of uh directives, it was like the third or it was the second to the last comment you made, or the third to the last comment that you made under the secondary.
To provide affordable housing to persons of low and moderate income, that one.
Yeah, I want to look at Tim, uh, Tom's face as that's read again.
No. Are you, now, Peter, this is interesting, uh, are you thinking about something uh? With this with with that with that outbuilding, uh, repurposing that outbuild?
Uh, I'm thinking about that existing barn, actually, Tom.
Oh, oh, oh.
And I'll, uh, I mean, you know, we 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 touched on this, I think, uh, informally in a discussion, and. Uh, you know, it it's a structure that's there. Um, your little white building could stay as it is, you would have that open appearance for we're behind, you know. In the backdrop of your witch stone and that beautiful stone wall.
Yeah.
And, you know, lot six wouldn't be as noticeable, because you'd have this almost like a pasture appearance, and if there was some way. And I know that, yeah, this is, you know, maybe way out of it, if that existing barn could be. I don't want to use the word repurposed, but it's a large structure, and if it could dovetail with what Martha just, which she she just described, I don't know if that would be something we're discussing, I don't know, I mean, I'm just. I'm trying to keep in the nature, and I listened to the comments of uh a lot of the abutters um in the previous hearing. Uh, about appearance and visualization and all that sort of stuff, so that's kind of my thought process right now, and I, this happened on a walk today when I was walking to the woods, so perhaps I shouldn't walk in the woods before I go to a meeting, Tom.
So, well, let me, let me, let me uh ask for a little clarification, Peter, are you, are you, are you sort of conceiving of the barn being potentially converted into a into an affordable unit? Uh, whether that's a rental or 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 a fee unit or something, or what 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 do you, what's what's your thought process there?
I'm open for discussion.
Well, I guess I'm open for discussion on that, too, I mean, I I I, you know, I um.
I would love to create some affordable housing some way, somehow in this town, Tom. And, you know, we get developers and they, you know, they want to, you know, put up these power homes, and they want to make, you know, six hundred, eight hundred grand, and I understand that, I do, I do. Um, but, you know, you 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 were, you appeared to me to be somebody who's willing to think outside the box, and you told me about some some creative stuff you've done. Uh, in the past, and I'm wondering if this might allow that to happen in maintaining a lot of the visual appearance for the frontage of this property and also achieve uh where you're trying to go.
Well, yeah, I mean, I certainly, you know, willing to to to, you know, to kick that around, I mean, you know, I um.
It's a curveball I just threw you, I understand.
Yeah, and and I I um, uh, you know, what I don't want to do is I, you know, again, the 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 finances of of projects like this are pretty delicate, particularly in today's market conditions and everything. I mean, I I I don't want to, uh, you know, it's very difficult to concede a home, but maybe to think about, I mean, I know in in these areas also, you know, um. Uh, additional dwelling units are sometimes a, you know, a a a nice, a nice uh, a nice way of trying to provide something that you can't provide otherwise. Um, and um, I mean, I think in this zone, even two families are allowed, so um, so, you know, but an additional dwelling unit, you know, a family. Um, you know, family suite sort of a thing, uh, or something of that nature, uh, it might might be possible to figure out with that with that structure.
Yeah, as opposed to uh moving the old that building that's that's there and kind of maintaining that appearance where lot seven is now. On this proposal, I don't know, just something to think about, I don't know, just, again, you know.
Pete, Mary. I'm just curious, uh, Tom, if you would think that, you know, what?
I'm so, I'm sorry, yeah.
Um, do you feel that the bones of the building that Pete is discussing would support? Um, any kind of rehab? Without. Compromising the integrity of the eventual structure?
Yeah, I'm 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 not, I'm not sure, Mary. We've we've taken a good look at that, and there's definitely some some concerns with that, for sure, um, so it's it's not an easy answer.
Right, okay, just a thought, Pete has brought up an interesting point, but if you have to take a building that doesn't have a good uh good foundation, um, good bones, then, you know, maybe it's not the best use of that building, just to.
Yeah.
Not putting the idea aside, just throwing that.
Yeah.
So I guess, uh, after throwing that curveball uh to uh Tom, since he, in an informal discussion, you know, we we had this kind of, you know. Accessory apartment or other way of maybe trying to get creative and making some sort of affordable housing work and in a situation like this, which is a new way of looking at a project like this, quite honestly, Tom. Um, and uh, um, you know, it just, that's that's a thought, so. Um, let's let's talk about bonus lots, let um, and what what the board feels about the this this project, the way it is, the landscape that it's in, and Larry, I'm going to start with you.
Uh, well, I mean. Do we have the um? Let me, let me find the uh. Section. We, do we have enough open space to qualify for two bonus lots?
I think that's the question, actually, I think it supports one, right?
It supports one for sure, absolutely, because it's made the threshold of fifty percent.
Yeah, but don't we need to get up to seventy percent for two lots?
That's correct.
But the way, if if I could jump in on that, we've read that, I think, very, very, uh, you know, clearly, and 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 as it's written, and uh. The, it doesn't appear, and I realize there's discretion here, so, you know, understand where I'm coming from, but, you know, the way it, the way it reads is it is it references the. The open space, not the upland open space, as as the as the as the ten percent increments for bonus, it just, it it doesn't, it doesn't distinguish uh as the fifty percent does. Um, you know, on the, or rather, as the as the sixty five percent does on on the um, upland open space. I mean, they're separate, they're separate thresholds.
So where where is that calculation, then?
Before we get too far in that conversation, Martha, is that um, is that your perspective of that, or is that your interpretation?
Actually, well, that's actually not my interpretation.
Okay.
But um, you know, certainly, certainly that can be discussed.
Okay, okay, I just want that out there, okay, go ahead, Larry, I'm sorry.
Oh, so where is that calculation, then, the seventy percent of the open spaces, is it? Is it on this sheet six?
I think sheet six said sixty five percent.
Right, right, but I I think what Tom is saying, it's sixty five percent of the upland open space as opposed to all of the open space.
Right, we've we've got, we've got eighty six in total.
Hmm.
So I think we're going to need some clarification, uh, and if this might, uh, this might direct the conversation even further, uh, Tom, uh, if there's a discrepancy between what's, uh, you know, um. How that, what what that number actually re of the upland uh versus total open space.
Yeah, could could I ask for for Martha to read that that bonus um sentence or paragraph there regarding open space bonus? I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately.
Yep, so increases in permissible density for each additional ten percent of the site over and above the required fifty percent. Set aside as open space, a bonus of one additional unit or five percent of the basic maximum number, whichever is greater, may be awarded.
So Martha, that fifty percent is based on the contiguous component, is that right?
Well, that fifty percent is based on the definition of open space.
Okay.
Which I am. To find here.
But but that clause clearly says uh, for every additional ten percent of the site.
Well, but it refers to the fifty percent, and the open space is a minimum of fifty percent of the upland shown on the development plan shall be open space, and then if you look at that. That sentence, it says for each additional ten percent of the site over and above the required fifty percent, so to my reading, that goes back to the definition of open space as being referring to the upland.
Yeah, I, so Tom, what I need to do is that we need to clarify um the definition to make sure the threshold is met, because if the threshold's not met, and the board elects to provide that, then we're going to have a, we're going to be. Find ourselves in a little bit of a bind, so.
Right.
Yeah, so let's do this, we'll do a little homework, just so everybody's comfortable, uh, to make sure that we're we're hitting that threshold, Larry, would that be a good recommendation for my?
Yeah, I I think so, and 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 we might even want something from town council on this.
Okay, all right.
We're we're setting an important precedent here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yep.
Uh, Peter, could could I jump in on one question on that, since we're having a product, a productive dialogue here, the um, you know, we we didn't um, we didn't push on these things. Uh, for instance, on the historical preservation element or anything, I mean, obviously, that's we're preserving that house and barn, that also gives us another unit, we didn't think we had to. Had to, you know, had to push that and let everybody know that we think we could have had more units that way, but but clearly, that's something that we're doing and intending to do, I I I'm not sure. Um, you you know, I mean, wh- whether regardless of the other interpretation of of the open space, we can certainly justify a unit. Uh, a bonus unit uh for consideration based on the the preservation of of the house and barn.
Right, although that would have to go through process with mass historic and and, you know, be subject to a historic preservation restriction. So there is some process, I mean, the other option is providing an affordable unit.
Oh. This this became an interesting discussion, could we stop screen sharing, Martha, because I just want to get everybody back up on the up on.
That's not mine.
Oh, okay. Okay, beautiful, uh, so Tom, wow, um, I didn't even know we were going to uh have the conversation about the historic uh site and what that would mean, and the process of that would have to go through, which I would think would be a. Uh, a time consuming and. I don't want to use the word adjuvant, but I would think would be a a layered process.
It has to be determined that it's eligible for listing on the national register, you know, I think for for masses to work to consider it, it doesn't have to get listed, but it has to be eligible for listing.
Okay, all right.
Hello, take one.
And somebody, you know, somebody would actually have to write up the Form B and and everything else. It may well qualify, but it could be a time consuming process.
All right, I I want to, George, I want to hear your thoughts, my friend.
Uh, my thoughts are that uh, I think we ought to have town council, as Larry says, first, trim on what the, uh, and give us a writing, a report to the board. What you are, why should go over the fifty percent, you start reducing the sixty five percent down to something else. Then you have, from for only one house, not two, right now.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Leslie, thoughts?
Um, it looks like we're that uh, they're at a five percent deficit as far as going for two lots, um, is there any way that perhaps you can invite the historical commission to do some kind of research on that to? Help to uh with the applying it to Massachusetts Historical Society, maybe speed things up?
Um, that would, I think, be up to Tom, if you want to investigate that path, which it it's an option, Tom, and a.
Yeah, I I I don't think, that's just not a reasonable uh thing for us to do in terms of the timing, it really is, it's a, it's too much of a time burden at this point.
Okay, got it, got it, I I I I understand, um.
You know, I suppose we could, uh, I suppose we could look at whether or not we can uh find another another five percent uh of the site by by squishing, by squishing things down, uh, Phil, maybe we couldn't, maybe we. Densify things and uh and look at it that way, uh, this this, I really don't want to do that, but I, you know, if that's uh. You know, if that's the interpretation, then we could probably, we could probably find a way to to do that, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah, perhaps, but I I I think, I I think, you know, at the risk of being, at the risk of being redundant, like, if if we read eleven A, it seems pretty straightforward, uh, so it says for each additional.
So what what I'm going to do, Phil, I don't want to interrupt you, but I want I want to get a town council to direct us, because I just want to make sure that the board is doing it correctly, just so we we're 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 doing what we're supposed to be doing, following the guidelines we're supposed to be following. And rather than I have an interpretation, or you have an interpretation, or someone else on the board have an interpretation, I'd like town council to direct us, because that's what they're there for, and that'll make it easier and cleaner for all of us to continue the discussion, I think. Um, uh, Woody, thoughts, sir?
I agree with what you just said, Peter, I think town council needs to look at that.
Okay, all right, um, Mary?
Yes, town council.
Okay.
Not clear right now.
Okay.
You have a legal opinion.
Okay, all right, so, um. So I think we have, we have to, we have to answer that question, Tom, um, and I think that would be, you know, we 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 agree that we have a a yield plan, we understand what the open space. Component is right now, we need better definition and interpretation to see what thresholds are being met, um, we've started a discussion about maybe getting creative in something affordable, or maybe um. Taking into account the the appearance of the and culture of the of the area, um, and I do understand it's a, it is a curve. Uh. But I think we can work, you know. We're work. Um, together collaboratively to see the best, the best uh direction to go in. Um, Martha, any other thoughts from your perspective?
Uh, not really, I mean, I I think that we need to, we do need to consult with town council on this, again, the only, the other potential for. Uh, for bonus unit would be make one of the dwellings an affordable unit, I I will say, just kind of contextually there, um, the Colby, Colby Lane. Subdivision, just in terms of sort of keeping the street frontage, did something um along the lines of creating an open space parcel that was right up at the front. Portion of the lot, so, you know, effectively, sort of the equivalent. portion of the lot. So, you know, effectively, sort of the equivalent to, to lot seven, which goes back to what Pete was suggesting earlier, which is, you know, perhaps there's a way to find, you know, find a way to keep that open, but that was actually designated open space, but
Do, do we have any idea how long a, a review of town council or an inquiry of town council would typically take?
I don't think it would take very long, Tom. Martha, do you think it would be long?
I wouldn't, wouldn't anticipate, so.
Yeah. So you're asking, yeah, I, I can see where you're going, Tom. So you have an idea or direction of what the next steps are, so you can plan accordingly. Well, how about this, Martha? Could we have that conversation kind of take place, inform the board of what, what that looks like? Let Tom know what that looks like, and if we have to have a kind of a strategic meeting with Tom with you, and if necessary, input. And then that way, we could come back to the, come back to the board with maybe a roadmap of where we're going. Would that make sense?
Yeah, so basically, I mean, authorize me to ask town council the question, and then have a discussion with, with Tom and Phil.
Right. Yeah. And that way, maybe we can get back on the schedule rather in a timely manner, so that we can get, keep you on track with where you want to be, Tom, and, and appreciate what our, what our responsibilities as well.
Yeah, I, believe me, I do. We've done pretty much nothing but, but cluster open space developments that, so I, I understand it's precedent setting and everything. I, I thought, I thought it was much more clear, obviously, than, than, than you all think, and that's, but I, I understand the, the different interpretation at this point. Is it, is it reasonable to think that we could be back in, in two weeks to conclude that?
Let's take a look at the schedule, Tom. Hold on. Martha, what you got?
So, um.
I think I know, I think I know the answer to this. I think two weeks looks very difficult. And I think Larry's gonna be driving the bus that night. Did I tell you about that, Larry?
You referred to it. You're gonna be away?
Yes, and I'm not sure I'll have connectivity.
Well, we'll muddle through without you if we need to, but I
So, one oh five is gonna be a long discussion. Eighty-four Boston Road, where are we with that, Martha? Are we into, we have a, doing, doing a draft decision?
Like, working on a draft decision for that one.
Okay.
Also working on a draft decision for two old point.
Larry, do you take naps during the day?
I, I, two weeks, I think, my, you know, we can't speak to town council's schedule either. May fifth looks more promising to me. Well, I don't know, Martha, how, how, how long do you, I guess the, any sense of how much time we would need for the draft decisions on eighty-four Boston and two old point road?
To discuss?
Yeah. Eighty-four should be pretty straightforward, right?
Yeah, it should, it should be. I mean, both of them, I think, you know, the board has gone through the, the decision criteria. So the meat of it really would be any, you know, any conditions above and beyond. You know, that are specific to these projects that would be discussed. I mean, I would say maybe half an hour each.
Okay. What's the kickoff time for that, Martha?
Well, Kurt, those, all three of those have been scheduled for seven fifteen, I believe.
What if you, what if you snuck this in at six forty-five?
Could do that.
I mean, let me just pull the board before that gets etched in stone. Larry, what do you think about six forty-five?
We wouldn't have time to do much other than to consider town council's opinion, but that's okay, I guess.
Well, we could, I mean, we could acknowledge at seven fifteen, we could acknowledge that there are three public hearings scheduled, and they will start as soon as we finish the, the one that starts at six forty-five. You know, if the discussion is longer, but or we could just focus on that, that one aspect.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a little concerned about the time we're gonna need for one oh five High Road.
Yeah, no, that's true. And he wants to be last.
One oh five wants to be last?
Yes. That's the last word I got, anyway.
I don't know. I, you know, I defer to the other members.
Okay. Alright. George, what would you think about a six forty-five, or, or am I tapping the scale too much?
Six forty-five works along the lines that Martha has suggested before. We have extended the meeting beyond its expected stop time on that particular issue.
Okay.
But not by too much.
Okay.
One oh five at the end, is that the, be a very late meeting?
Yeah. Okay. Leslie, what do you think?
I'm okay with six forty-five.
Okay, Woody?
Go with six forty-five on the Coleman Road, and if maybe more of a hot stop at seven fifteen, and we're basically reviewing council's decision on what we're, we're gonna ask them. So you would think that we could do that from six forty-five to seven fifteen.
Okay, Mary?
Six forty-five's fine.
Okay, cool. Martha, could we stop, stop on the screen share?
Yes.
Okay. So Tom, this is what we're looking at. We'll get town council's input, we'll start the meeting earlier so that we can accommodate this, so we can have direction. That direction, hopefully, will, you know, I'm sure there'll be conversations with you with Martha in the interim of that. And so that we can allow the board to have its information, and hopefully, we can streamline a discussion. And then we can get to the, you know, to the, actually, the, the concept of, of, of design and design standards and that sort of stuff, so that we're all on the same page, so that there isn't any anticipated interpretation, so it, it goes smoothly. Does that make sense, sir?
Yeah, I think, I think that's the best we can do at this point, Peter. Thank you.
Okay, we're, working with you here, Tom, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Phil, thank you very much. Tom, thank you very much.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the twenty-first at six forty-five. Am I correct with that time and date, Martha?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you for the, for the motion. And who will second that, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion in discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Okay, and how do you feel, Mary?
No.
Okay, on the motion itself, how say you, George? I'm sorry, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. George, how do you say?
Yes.
Very good. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Very good. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and Mary, your sense, your sense of feeling?
Yeah.
Very good. And the chairs and favors, well, thanks so much, Tom. Thanks so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you all for the extra time. Appreciate it very much.
Right. Good discussion, good discussion.
Thanks.
Okay, continuing on our agenda, and I'm sorry for the delay on our agenda. We're going to have a public hearing for definitive subdivision plan application, two seventeen, two twenty-one High Road map, R twenty-seven lots, fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-six applicant, Gadsden Lane LLC, Adam True, manager, owner, MDM, nominee trust, Dale B, a bachelor in Carl, Carly Brown trustees, lots fifty-one, fifty-three, and Carl Brown and Margaret Brown, estate of Margaret Brown, lots fifty-four, fifty-six, continuing from March third, twenty twenty-one. Okay, and let me minimize this, and I'm gonna ask the applicant or engineer to go through the responses to be reviewed, letter number one, and any revised plans that were submitted to the board, and, and, and responses. So where are we?
Mr. Chairman, good evening, if I could speak.
Yes, Doug, go right ahead, sir.
Yes, good, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Douglas DeShane, here this evening representing Gadsden Lane LLC, Adam True, manager of Gadsden Lane is on the line as well as Scott Cameron from Warren Cameron Group, our engineer. Mr. Chairman, before we move to the engineering discussion, I would just like to give the board a quick, quick update on two homework assignments that we received from the board last week. Just want to let you know that we did, in fact, address those. First of all, in response to a question raised by, I believe, Mr. Murphy concerning the status of the pre-existing non-conforming drive garage on two seventeen High Road. I had back in November written a letter to the building inspector, asking whether or not, you know, this subdivision would require a new variance or some other permit to allow that garage to remain. You'll recall that it's actually too close to the lot line, and there was a question where we were affecting the lot lines for that lot, whether we lost the pre-existing non-conforming status. So I did, back in November, speak with the building inspector and town council, and, and we had agreed that because all we were doing is adding land to that lot to make it conforming, that we didn't need to seek variance. However, based on Mr. Murphy's question at the last meeting, I did reach out again to the building inspector to verify that determination. And he did just respond to me with a, an email verifying that, in fact, that the added square footage to the lot on two seventeen would have no effect on that existing non-conforming setback condition. I, I'm not sure whether the building commission copied the board on this, but I will forward it along to you so that you have it for your record. But I did want to respond to the question that we did, in fact, verify that situation. Also, another thing we discussed at the last meeting, you recall that Ms. Sheen, one of our abudders, had raised a number of questions and had a number of concerns. First of all, I did, in fact, provide a written response to what I hope were, were all of the questions that Ms. Sheen had not only submitted in writing to the board some time ago, but a number of questions that she reiterated at the last meeting. So I did provide a written response, and I know I copied the board on it. But I think more importantly, Mr. True did, in fact, reach out and arrange to meet with Ms. Sheen, and they did so, and they talked through her concerns and her issues. I do believe that, again, she received the answers to her questions, but also, Mr. Mr. True has agreed and is committed to actually provide some plantings and screening buffer for Ms. Sheen on her property, so that she will be able to have a thicker buffer to the development. And again, Mr. True has committed to do that, and I believe he's gonna work with Ms. Sheen, so that they can come to an agreement on the location and the, and the quantity of the, the buffering. But the good news is, I, I think they've had a very productive discussion, and I, I hope Ms. Sheen is, is comfortable. However, if she has additional concerns, we will continue to work with her and make sure that she's comfortable with what we're proposing. So that, with that, Mr. Mr. Chairman, members, I would like Mr. Cameron to give you an update on where we are with the engineering review.
Members of the board, I'm here. A little slow to hit the unmute button. Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. The work is Scott Cameron with the Warren Cameron Group. I'm the engineer for Mr. True. So, at our last meeting, at the beginning of March, we had received the initial comments in, just ahead of that meeting, from Joe and several of the department heads and staff, and we followed that meeting, did have a, a meeting with Martha, Joe, and our team to go over the comments. We got pen to paper pretty quick. We did submit a letter to you on March twenty-ninth, and if you'll see in the letter, I did include both Joe's initial comment and our response to it, trying to make it a little easier to follow through, so you don't have to go back and forth between both letters. But those are all spelled out in the letter. I, we also included with that some supplemental stormwater calculations, which usually, you know, most people don't understand, but that's what Joe's looking at. It kind of outlines all the technical aspects of the project that he asked us to clarify in that, including a construction phase, operation maintenance plan, sizing calculations for the driveway, culverts, swales, documentation of compliance, to the extent practical with the stormwater standards. And earlier today, I received the response back from Joe. Looks to me, you know, again, just having received this, this afternoon, it looks to me going through his letter here, that really we're down to, there's one item on the stormwater. One is relatively minor. One of them, I think, we just need to, he and I just need to collaborate on how we can kind of muddle through, you know, some regulation that, you know, doesn't really fit the context of, of what we're trying to achieve here in the, in the preservation of the, of the woods and open space, especially in the rest of the property. I see some workarounds on it, and Martha did invite us, and when she sent that out in her email, to have a follow-up meeting with Joe, and I would like to take her up on that. With that, I think, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions the board has about the comments. I do have the plans available, if you want me to pull that up. And I'll, I'll turn it back to you. I think, you know, again, we're, we're very close. I think there's two relatively small things we gotta work around, and we should be good.
So thank you, Scott. And I just want to jump back to Doug. Doug, thank you for being the facilitator to, to work with the abutter. I think that's very, you know, that's necessary, and that's appreciated. And, and the board would like to acknowledge, actually, thank you very much. So Scott, the little workaround that you're talking about, is that the DEP thing that Bill Holt is concerned with?
Yeah, you know, I think first, you know, Bill's working with DEP is kind of the gatekeepers of the stormwater handbook, which the subdivision regulations tie in to the equation here. We follow that on every design, regardless. You know, so they're, they're providing commentary. So I, you know, we always respect that. I've done certain things, certain ways over the last twenty years. Others have done things other, other ways. I see a workaround, the comment at hand, Mr. Chair, if you read, it's relating to the mitigation component for the stormwater design. When I use the term mitigation, that's referring to the, the precondition versus the, the developed condition flow of runoff from the, the property. And what we're required to do, in most cases, is make sure we're not going to increase the, the rate of runoff from the property. However, the regulations quite clearly say, and we, we follow this over the years without fail, that if you're, you're draining to a coastal resource area called land subject to coastal storm flowage, which is title, tightly influenced that the requirement for mitigation can't be waived. In this case, what we're trying to figure out is just some interpretation of, of what it means to discharge to the coastal resource. On this application, we're designing to a certain point in the property. The entire property drains to that point, and that falls within the coastal resource. So I feel we meet spirit intent, kind of some belts and suspenders, or saying, well, you're actually like, your limit of work is a hundred or so feet away from the coastal resource, you're not draining directly to it, you're kind of go over to having to feed a land, then you get to it. My point is, it's all going in the same spot anyways, and we're not trespassing another property. And I guess as a workaround, in lieu of clearing another half acre of forest to build a detention pond to effectively, you know, again, do nothing, get the discharge to the coastal resource that we perhaps try to trench a, kind of a swale down close to it, and put a level spreader right at the, at the flood zone line. You know, I think, I think we can do it in a way where we're real, we're not gonna result in any tree clearing. Adam might have to meet out there and kind of walk it and see what that path might look like. But in that manner, we can get the water to that point to meet the literal interpretation of, of this, of this regulation. And again, this, and I gotta, I haven't talked to Joe about it, haven't talked to Bill about it, just seeing this last few hours, and my thoughts on it. And again, this is something I gotta, I haven't talked to Joe about it, haven't talked to Bill about it, uh, just seeing this last few hours and my thoughts on it. Um, I, I, you know, I think and I hope that's a very reasonable workaround to preserve the spirit of the. You know, the project and, and make sure we're, we're hitting all the boxes on the stormwater design.
I appreciate that, um, again, that, that was just recently, because that just came in a, as well. Uh, so that there, it sounds like some more discussions and perhaps a meeting with each of Joe and or Bill, uh, just so that, uh. Uh, that D P, uh, concern can be addressed, I think that's very appropriate, Scott, thank you. Good, Adam, we, did you want to say something, sorry, I think I saw your hand up.
Uh, yeah, so Adam truly applicant. Two quick comments, uh, Doug, in the very beginning was talking about Peters, Peter Burnett, the, uh, building commissioners. Uh, letter back to us, and it was also, he also covered in that letter two twenty-one High Road. Not having enough, uh, side yard setback, once we create the road, and he confirmed that, uh. That again was okay, and that, that we wouldn't be creating anything dimensional variance or anything. And, uh, with regards to what Scott's talking about, it's basically draining. Down to the edge of the, near the wetland to the coastal resource area, and then obviously it would find its way to it. It's all steeply graded in there, so it would either be that or we dig all the way down to the coastal. Um, to basically allow the drainage of the water, but. Um, I think an understanding of the site would be helpful too, because it's just sort of ledge and outcroppings here. And if it flows down, it's basically. Running over almost ledge with small eastern white cedar trees, you know, speckled all over it, so it's. It's moving at velocity down away and sort of in this natural path. Um, I wouldn't see, uh, you know, I would hope you, you would see the same light that I do and not trenching all the way down there. And disturbing the natural topography just to allow the water to mitigate. But if it's something that's necessary, obviously, we're willing to do it, so.
Okay, so, yeah, I say, let's, let's find out, um, have some more discussions with both, uh, Joe and Bill, uh, so that there can be a clear understanding of what. What needs to take place, and that would, that will help you with this process, I think, Adam. Okay, great, um, so I want to ask, uh, board members if they have any comments or questions with what's been said thus far. Um, Larry, do you have anything, sir?
Uh, well, just, I'm just looking at my notes here. If I'm reading the comments correctly, uh, uh, um, it looks like you're still at odds with Joe Suwetka regarding. The roadway, Crown Road versus super elevated, if you could talk about that. And also, there's the March third letter from the, um, uh, health agent regarding, uh, some issues with the, uh, the. Soil evaluation, so you could talk to, talk about that.
Sure, um, I guess in Joe's response, I didn't see, uh, that we're at odds, he, he does call out that, uh, there's a portion of the, uh. The road that you might have some overlap with conduit and the swell. Um, and I think that area, uh, that he's referring to, or I know that area is referring to, is, is from. From here to here. Um, the, you know, what we're, what neither Joe or I are operating with is the, the design by the electric company. On how they're gonna rate, lay these conduits, uh, and they won't do that until we have all our permits in hand, and Adam pays a big fee to them. Uh, to get them going, so what I was envisioning is, you know, they'll be running the, the conduit down this side of the road. And bring it in under the road here, and at that point, they would split one side here, we've reserved an electric easement. And then bring the other one down this way and put into that electric, and us, obviously. You know, we gotta work around is the, the ledge here, I'm just drawing this crudely, it'll probably come around like this to that location. So that, you know, again, I think by having the swell on one side, it gives them the flexibility to, to place that conduit in a manner that, that satisfies their requirements. Um, so I, I guess I, I can clarify that with Joey, he didn't add any other thing to respond to, he just makes a point. About this section of road, I think he was probably thinking that conduit would come down this side to that point.
Well, may, maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding it, the, the whole issue of super elevated just means tire on one side than the other, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, and then does that require a waiver from our subdivision regulations?
Correct, yep, correct.
Okay, um, and again, what about the Board of Health concern?
The, yep, the Board of Health, so when we initially did this, we hadn't, you know, typically at this point, we're not gonna fully engineer all the septic system designs, because. You know, a, you know, Adam's gonna pay for all that work and then be, you know, we don't, we don't know if the, the, the project's approved yet by your board, so we don't want to go. Engineering something and then having something change, it creates a lot of inefficiencies, so. When I initially did this, we showed the soil tests, and I just drew some boxes that represented kind of a, a footprint of the system. There wasn't any engineering, it was just say, you know, we can reserve that, that space for a septic system. Um, Deborah's comment and also, uh, Joe's comment marrying it was that, you know, the soils. That the systems need to be closer to the test holes, and what I, what I laid out here is I went through and I did a preliminary sizing of the septic system. Uh, which will be trenches in this case, so what we'll do is we'll have an alternating. You know, primary and reserve trench, so there'll be two active trenches and two backup trenches, and those are centered directly over the test holes, you can see the. The test holes of each system, and that, that, that meets the, uh, the spirit, you know, I guess of, of. You know, the placement of those test holes, what, what they found when they're out there.
So that, these are placed in response to her, to her comment.
Yep, these are a lot more detailed, uh, than I, like, we would normally do, usually I just reserve a larger area so that, um. You know, somebody building a lot doesn't change the design and put something over an area we're trying to save, but in this case, we're, we're telling him here, this is where it's gonna be.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Larry, uh, George, sir, do you have anything?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, uh, we could probably stop screen sharing for now, Scott, thanks very much, um, Leslie, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, great, Woody, sir, do you have anything?
Um, I had a question about the perk, it's Leachfield, but that's been addressed, so no, I don't.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mary, do you have anything?
No, I think it's great these guys talk to the, um, the neighbor, so that was needed, and, uh, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mary, um, okay, uh, let's see, um, Martha, have there been any. Uh, written submissions or any public comments that you've received?
I've not received any public comments, uh, did receive an updated letter from the fire chief, which I forwarded on to you. Say, saying that the plans are acceptable with the fire department as is due to the city being in a low water district residential sprinkler systems will be required for each building.
Okay, um, are there any people? Are there any individuals that are from the public that would like to, uh, address the board or ask any questions? Okay, I don't see anything.
No, nor do I.
Okay, um, all right, um. So Larry, but what do you think about next steps?
Um, I don't know, well, I, I think they need to have that, uh, the meeting, you know, technical meeting. Uh, certainly, um, beyond my, uh.
Hey, great.
My expertise, work out those things with Joe.
Yep, okay, all right, um, George, any other next steps you think of right now?
Uh, I think concerning, uh, Adam's commitments to putting in screening for the neighbor. I think I would like that commitment reduced to writing, yeah, and delivered to the board and made a part of the record.
Okay, all right, uh, Leslie?
Uh, nothing in addition to what George and Larry have said.
Okay, uh, Woody?
And I actually, uh, have a clarification. What Larry's saying, and maybe it's, I just don't, didn't sit over, did see what was going on. Um, we're determining if this, this is a four lot subdivision or a six lot subdivision. For stormwater, is that correct?
I think DEP has, has ruled that they consider it a six lot subdivision, and so, you know, so, so does Bill.
Okay. All right, that's the only thing I had, thank you. I, I wasn't sure if that determination had been made or, or not.
Okay, very good, thanks, Woody, uh, Mary?
Oh, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, um, where do we stand with waivers, Martha?
Well, I think, uh, that's one of the things that the board will need to, to go through is that the waiver requests.
Okay.
They, they had been discussed during the preliminary plan stage, um, but should obviously be reviewed at this point as well.
So let's, let's do that if we have a couple of minutes, um, can we pop those up, or, um. Scott, or do you wanna? Yep, thank you, sir. So I'll let you drive, Scott.
Good thing, um. So the first waiver, uh, so again, all these, these are all in keeping with the preliminary plan waivers, uh, we didn't. Uh, the only we did add was the dead end, uh, but it's, it's, it's minor, that was really just to get out and around a tree. Um, that was surveyed between the preliminary submission and the definitive, uh, so waiver one is, is reduction in the right of way width from fifty-three to forty feet. Um, this, this again reduces the footprint, allows us to kind of get a little more flexibility with the, the alignment of the road. Um, if you recall, our initial preliminary plan was a thirty-four foot right of way, um, and through that process, we. Working with the board, uh, increased at the forty feet. Uh, the second waiver is really the geometric waivers, uh, do you want to go through these one by one?
Um, yeah, so, um, let's do that, and I just want to, uh, as, we'll do the first way before, and I want to hear first, uh, Martha, first wave of comments?
No, I mean, as Scott said, that was something that was discussed during the preliminary plan process, um, and forty. The thirty-four feet that was suggested before really was a little too narrow, but forty feet is something the board has. Right, as allowed, and, and that was, that was noted in the preliminary, preliminary plan, sorry.
So let me just shoot down, Larry, you comfortable with waiver one?
Yeah.
Okay, George, comfortable with waiver one?
Yes.
Good, uh, Leslie, comfortable with wa- waiver one?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, comfortable with waiver one?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel about waivers? Okay, cool, all right, go ahead, number two, Scott.
Two, all right, these are really the geometric waivers. On the, on the layout of the road, so the horizontal layout, so, um, there, the, the geometric requirements are all found in the same section. One seventeen dash twenty-three B, uh, so we're requesting a waiver, uh, a hundred forty feet. Um, on the outside cul-de-sac diameter, where a hundred sixty-five feet is normally required, so it's normally, this is the, the lollipop shape, so. Uh, instead of a circle that's a hundred sixty-five foot in diameter, we have more of an elliptical shape with a hundred forty foot outside diameter. And then the roadway would be reduced from a hundred forty feet to a hundred twenty-two feet. Uh, with twenty-two feet of pavement where twenty-five feet of pavement is usually required, uh, we did provide the, uh, fire truck turning. Um, what's called a sweat path analysis to demonstrate that you could move the fire truck around this cul-de-sac. Um, so geometrically, you know, uh, the emergency vehicle access is one of our greater concerns, uh, in that regard. Uh, and again, this waiver, as all four of these are intended to minimize the, you know, the, the environmental footprint of the project, uh, on the property.
Okay, great, uh, from the tech, technical standpoint, Martha, waiver two?
I think, uh, you know, the biggest consideration would be fire if they had concerns about it, and the chief has indicated that they're okay with it, so.
Okay, cool, let me find out how the board's feeling about the waiver two, uh, Larry?
The fire department's happy, I am.
Very good, sir, thank you, um, George?
Yes.
Very good, uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Wonderful, uh, Woody?
Yes.
Wonderful, and Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, uh, waiver three.
Weaver three, um, so this one was added, uh, on the definitive phase following, you know, the, the more detailed engineering and survey. Uh, work that, that comes between, you know, your preliminary and definitive design, uh, and this was to extend the road slightly, uh, from five hundred to. Five hundred thirty-five feet, very minimal, um, that thirty-five feet, I'll just bear with me, I'll pan down to the. Site plan. So really what's driving that is, is we just, we took a conservative measurement out to the end of the. Uh, cul-de-sac here, we kind of took the, the longest point away from the road. As you can see the shape of this, where we're trying to get around and through, um, these trees and, uh. Navigate this, so it was just really, uh, it was really the consequence of designing the road to the land. Is how that boiled down, so we, we took the existing features, we're trying to preserve, place the design of the road on there, and this is what we ended up with. There wasn't anything more than that, uh, with the design, uh, we would prefer it kept it a little shorter, would have created a little more buildable space in the lots, but. Um, I think this, this really resulted in the best, uh, you know, fit to the property for the roadway.
Okay, great, Martha, technical concerns?
Um, no.
Okay, great, um, Larry, how do you feel?
I'm okay with it.
Perfect, George?
Yes.
Wonderful, uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Excellent, and, uh, Mary, okay, great, all right, waiver number four.
Number four, all right, so this one is from section one seventeen dash twenty-four and, uh, one seventeen attachment one, which is the typical roadway. Cross-section, there's some duplicate information here from waiver one, so that would include the forty-foot right of way, the twenty-two feet of pavement. Um, uh, that we, we described in waiver one and two. And then the rest of it has to do with the cross-section of the road, this is where we get into the swale on one side, we get into the super elevation, the crowning. Um, and, and again, the, the, the way the engineer, the, the road is engineered is to minimize that footprint. Um, the issue, uh, just in recent experience with, uh, Adams, uh, the subdivision just down the street. Uh, when we designed that with a crown, uh, and a, and a swell on each side, what, what the result was, was the, the electric company saying, you know, you can't. Can't put the swell on that side, we're gonna run our conduit, and they didn't have enough room in the right of way to, to put both. Um, so I think in this manner, you know, we achieve a, a good balance here, um, the roadway, uh, the swale is. Able perfectly capable of handling the runoff from the road, um, and the experience itself, uh, honestly, um. I, I don't think a, a driver is going to notice this on the road, if it was, uh, major, you know, you know, a, a through roadway, a collector road or arterial. Or something like that, we wouldn't be considering this, uh, type of design, but it's a small, uh, rural, uh, road servicing only for homes. Uh, so very low traffic use, um, and we've done this, um, there is actually one in, in, in Salisbury that's relatively new. Uh, and I think, I think Joe might have reviewed that one too for Salisbury, but it's right off the ferry road on Sycamore Lane, that accesses five homes. Um, and I was just on it last week driving it, you know, it's been built for about a year, year and a half. Uh, and honestly, I couldn't tell the difference driving down, uh, the, the cross slope's very flat, so. Again, we feel this is the, the best way to fit, you know, the, the property, all these waivers kind of work in keeping with each other. Um, and, um. That's the fourth one.
Great, uh, Martha, technical concerns?
Uh, just a question, was there any waiver also in, 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 in the slope at all, the cross slope?
No, we're providing the, uh.
Percentage.
Provide the cross slope, yeah, they can pull up the. Let me just pull it up, my computer wants to not be difficult here. We also, just to kind of, the original cross-section, we had it exaggerated vertically, and it looked. You know, the, the cross slope looked really steep, um, this is a, a, a typical three point one two five cross slope. Three eighths inch per foot.
Good, thank you.
Great, uh, Larry, concerns or thoughts?
Uh, no, I, I think I'm okay with it.
Great, George?
Fine.
Okay, uh, Leslie?
I'm good.
Uh, Woody?
I'm comfortable.
Great, uh, Mary?
Also.
Okay, great, waivers are, are taken care of, okay, next step, so there's a little bit of a question that you have to do with, uh. Looks like with Bill and Joe, uh, and the DEP issue, so let's pick a date so we can get you back here. Uh, and, uh, get things, uh, back on, keep, keep things on track. Martha, would you mind popping our schedule, because I think I know where this is gonna land?
So, and the other thing we need to be mindful of is schedule.
Schedule.
Because as a prelim, uh, since the preliminary plan was approved, we had, the board has ninety days from when this was filed.
Okay, so.
Which I believe takes us actually to May third, if I calculated correctly, Doug, I don't know if you've, uh.
No, I, I don't have that in front of me, Martha, I'm sorry.
Uh, for, from flexibility standpoint, could that be, uh, extended at the request of the applicant?
Yeah, the applicant would have to grant an extension to the board.
Okay, um, yeah, no, I, I'd be willing to, to do that, because I, I certainly don't see, uh. Unless you guys want to see us at five thirty on April twenty-first, which I know you do.
All right. I appreciate your request for an extension. Thank you very much, Adam. Okay, Martha, did you need anything in writing for that?
We would need something in writing and we need to, you know, set a date for that extension. So we sort of have to think through. You know, it seems like the stormwater concerns are really the, the major issue. So we'll need to have a, you know, revised set of plans that reflects whatever gets agreed to.
Okay.
And then direction to, to write a decision and all of that. So I'm just kind of trying to think, think forward.
Okay, is that going to require official D P input? Doug Shaker said no.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't believe so. I think it's really a matter of, of everyone kind of getting to be on the same page.
But good. So that being the case, and if we were to land on the fifth, and then if things look good, then, then it'd be a, a matter of fabricating decision, right?
Yeah.
Draft, draft decision, which would be a couple of weeks, just to keep everything in line. So you would probably want an extension to at least the end of June, midway through July. Would that be right?
No.
End of May, maybe?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure it needs to go out that far.
Okay, okay. So end of May, beginning of June, just to get flexibility. So maybe a four-week extension. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I'm just pulling up the schedule to see here, the calendar to see what might.
I just want to make sure you have enough time to do the draft decision, then we review it and and then if there's any considerations, you know.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, are, are we, are we looking at continuing to May fifth?
Yes.
Then I would suggest we can, we provide the board an extension to its first meeting in May. That way, assuming we get everything wrapped in, on your May fifth meeting, that would give you two full meetings to move forward with decisions and drafts and, and, and so I, I, I'm sure Mr. True is, is comfortable with us giving you an extension even to a few days beyond your June meeting. And, and obviously, Mr. Chairman, if, if we run into issues getting the engineering wrapped up or if staff runs into time constraints, we're going to be reasonable. I can assure you that.
Thank you, Doug. I appreciate that. So are you comfortable with that, Martha?
Yeah, I'm just looking. So that would be June, June second is the first meeting in June.
Okay.
And to, as Doug said, to, to give a couple of days to, to wrap up and maybe to, to June seventh.
Okay, all right.
That seems appropriate.
Yep. So let, let, let's have that as our target. And then if we need to modify, we can modify. But at least we're all on the, on the same page of what we need to do to get to that point. Okay.
And I'll submit a written extension, Martha, in the next day or two.
That would be great. And I'll get that filed with the town clerk.
Yep. Thank you, Doug. Thank you. All right then, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the fifth of May at seven fifteen.
I will move to continue the public hearing until May fifth at seven fifteen P M.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second? I don't know who did that first. So, okay.
So was that Woody?
I think so.
First, but it doesn't matter.
Okay, I, if we can stop screen sharing, Martha, that'd be perfect.
I'm sorry. Yep.
I know. Thank you, thank you. Okay, any, any discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
George?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Woody?
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay, voting on the motion. How do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Woody?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. George, I didn't say thank you. Thank you very much. And the chair is also in favor as well. So we'll send you guys back the fifth of May at seven fifteen.
Awesome.
Thank you, Chairman, members of board. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
You as well.
Okay. All right, let's see, Martha, what else do we have on our agenda that we need to?
I think we kind of covered it.
Beautiful, beautiful. Great. Financial's been done. Any plan is report? Are we good?
I think I covered everything I needed to.
Perfect. All right. That being the case, everyone, I want to thank you very much for tonight's meeting and getting through it. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, Larry?
No.
Very great. George, discussion? Leslie, discussion?
No.
Woody, discussion?
No.
Mary, discussion? All right, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, George.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Leslie?
Yes.
Wonderful. Woody?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Fantastic. And Mary?
Yes, thank you, Pete, and thank you, Martha, as always.
Well, thank you all. And I am also in agreement that we should probably call it a night, folks. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Mary. Yes, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Thanks, Emily.